Good morning, everyone, and welcome to.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to a special meeting of the Spokane City Council in conjunction with our normal Thursday 11:00 AM study session. Ms. Fister, would you call the role?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
He raised his hand here.
Okay, he raised his hand.
I assume she said my name. Here.
Okay. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, President.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, so we're going to start out with an administrative report on sheltering during cold weather from the administration, and then eventually, I think council will have probably lots of questions for folks, and then we'll have a letter drafted by council members Stratton and Zepone for consideration for signature by council after that and discussion on that. So, welcome Mayor Woodward to our study session and all your key folks on this issue. It's great to have you, and I'm not sure who's leading off, but whoever is, go ahead.
That would be me, council president. Thank you so much, and thank you, council, for this opportunity. I really wanted to be able to share with you what we did during our very, very extreme cold snap through the holidays and after the first of the year. You know, we've been working on regional shelter system for, well, since I've been in office, but certainly during the pandemic in a way where we can provide more consistency and predictability. And so I'm very thankful for all of your help and funding a lot of that. So I kind of want to go over that. In addition to the activation of the shelter at the convention center, which lasts for two weeks, the lessons that we learned from that, and then, which I'm sure you're very interested in, is next steps on how we're going to address emergent needs as they come up, whether that's during the cold weather or smoky, you know, poor air quality or even heat waves. So, the plan, as we've articulated over the last year and a half, and many of you have been part of those conversations, council president Beggs served with me at the regional table as we got a lot of these things across the finish line, and that was to enhance what the system, the existing system, to make it more predictable. So, we did enter into a long-term contract with troop ministries to add 40 new beds. That was completed in August. We established a multi-year contract with the Guardians to add 24/7 space at the Cannon Street Shelter, which was a goal. We did that in September. We opened up the young adult shelter for 18 to 24-year-olds on East Mission, operated by Volunteers of America to provide 44 spaces there, and then opened the Way Out Shelter after renovation through the fall. We opened in December as a bridge housing model program with 60 spaces. And all of those things, in addition to we were able to add hotel rooms during the winter months for flex space when inclement weather happens. Some of those hotel rooms are for victims of domestic violence, so that's something new. And then we bought down, or we were able to add 12 reduced barrier beds at UGM when we need them. So we do have a dozen beds there that we can utilize at any given time. So, as we activated the convention center, the Warming Center, at the convention center, we partnered with public facilities districts, so I'm very grateful if some of them are on the call today and they can share their experience. Very thankful for our partnership with the PFD. They were amenable to activating the convention center for that first week. Guardian Foundation, which operates the Cannon Street Shelter, they came on board to staff that 24/7. We were looking for a large facility. Convention Center answered that need, of course, in a central location away from schools and daycares and away from a concentration of business or retail. So that's how we decided on the convention center. And you'll remember during COVID, the convention center, the arena, all those public facilities were identified as emergency facilities that we could use when called upon. So very thankful for that. The mission there was obviously to provide respite and a safe place for people who wanted to escape the cold weather. We wanted it to be 24 hours so it was easily accessible. We made sure that we had security there and a police presence for safety, because safety is very, very important, and we wanted to make it so that people could bring their pets as well, because we know how important a pet companion is to our unhoused. So those were all considerations. So as we mobilized, these were our objectives. The first week, we opened on December 26 at noon. We were anticipating up to 150 people. We did see more. We'll share you those numbers in a minute. We wanted to make sure that we were following the safety guidelines because of COVID. Again, this was a congregant facility, and we are still exercising social distancing and COVID practices. We wanted to make sure that people had appropriate PPE, and we had access to testing too, by the way, COVID testing. And as I mentioned, we wanted a safe place for animals. So as we were planning this, in the several, several, well, the week leading up to the weather, we wanted to make sure that we communicated what that plan was as robust as possible. So, we use, of course, local news media. We use the city's website page. We had direct communication through social media and the city's community newsletter, which reaches 95,000 people weekly. And then we went directly to some of the stakeholders, CHHS stakeholders, and their very robust email list of nonprofits and providers, because we wanted to make sure that everybody who has any connection with our vulnerable population would be able to articulate what that plan was and where they needed to go. We also provided transportation. So, the word was out. At the end of the first week, December 2nd was when we were going to scale down or shut down the convention center. But the snow was coming. The temperatures were increasing. We weren't seeing the below zero temperatures, but we did see that there was going to be quite a bit of snow in the forecast. So we made a decision to extend the Warming Center another week, not only to help those who wanted to come in from the snow, but also to give us more time to connect people to services, because even as we operated this temporary emergency Warming Center, we had capacity within the system. We had available beds, and we wanted to use that time to connect them to services and the beds that were available in the regional system. And also to look at other options if we needed to stand up a Warming Center with extreme cold temperatures in the future. So we extended it one more week to December 9. That was the decision point in that. So if we can go to the next slide. This is what we saw during the operation, so I wanted to share, and I want to thank the council members who did stop by the Warming Center to see what the operation looked like and how many people were there. I really appreciate your interest in this as well. But we saw anywhere from 103 to almost 350 guests. Half of the nights that we operated during those two weeks, we saw 300 people. And we did see the greatest surge in usage between the overnight hours of 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. We served 9,000 meals, so there were three meals served a day. We did test the guests on three different occasions. We did not have one positive test, positive news. We did establish a separate isolation area in case anybody was ill. We did a survey on the Thursday and Friday of the guests before we shut down on Sunday to get some better information about who was accessing the shelter. We'll share some of that information in a minute. We also responded to 54 medical calls at the shelter, and there were 30 doses of Narcan that were administered. Our team met daily, every morning throughout the holidays, every single day, to talk about operations and how we could improve and what we were seeing. We were also visited by Street Outreach, which is very, very helpful. That two-week period, the estimate, the early estimation is about $400,000 in expenses on the city side of things. So that's rental of convention center operations and incidentals. And we saw damages. We, right now, the PFD is estimating those damages to be about $90,000. That is a preliminary number, and I'll share with you some of those damages entail. And six arrests were made during the two-week period for things like warrants, trespassing, and we did see violent behavior. Lessons learned. So one of the things that, and this was a different exercise for us, it really was, because of the population that we saw access the shelter and that were served. So one of the things that we learned is we need to not let people come and go 24/7 and all through the overnight hours. That was disruptive. Oftentimes, people would leave, do drugs, and then come back, and we would see aggressive, violent behavior. We need to make sure that the spaces that we use in the future are not carpeted and that are easily cleaned. We need to be able to utilize even more robust security, and we can't overestimate the cleaning needs that will come in operating these kinds of facilities. We also have to make, when people come into this shelter very early on, clear communication about what the expectations are. And then, we need to do a better job of connecting those who are accessing even a temporary shelter. We need to make sure that we can get them to services. Of the survey that we did on a Thursday and Friday, we found that three-quarters of those who used the shelter were male, and that either walking in or public transportation is how they reach the shelter. 92% singles, 3% couples. And then, I just want to show you some pictures that really illustrate the challenge, and that also resulted in the $90,000 that we, right now, could go higher, that of damages left at the convention center. So obviously, carpeting is a big problem, and those, the first couple of days, the restrooms at the convention center had to be closed down because of all the damage in the restrooms. Broken toilet seats, things that were holes in the walls, broken mirrors, electrical outlets that were kicked off the wall or rendered unusable. The banquet chairs that you saw in the previous pictures, there were about 90 of those banquet chairs. Now, after we closed the restrooms, we did bring in porta-potties. So there were places to use a toilet. But the chairs, the banquet chairs that you saw in the previous picture, 90 chairs had to be replaced because people used banquet chairs as toilets. And I know that sounds hard to believe, but it illustrates that the type of people that we serve during this two-week period were people that don't always look for services, don't necessarily want services, and don't want to go to shelters. And they are not used to being in spaces like this. So those are all things that we have to think about moving forward as we serve a very challenging population. A lot of garbage left behind. You know, I think maybe the PFD can talk more about what they saw as well, but there's drug use. There was also an STA bus stop right outside the convention center, and the windows were broken out there. Regular drug use was witnessed there. Drug use was witnessed not only in the restrooms, but also in the porta-potties and people coming and going. So, so those are the challenges. But, so what's next? That's, I know what you really want to know about is, we did this really bad inclement weather again, and as we continue to work under the ordinance that you passed this past summer, what are we doing? Well, we're continuing to look for space. We've even reached out to the Emergency Operations Center, so that's the county and the state, and nothing has come back as an option there. We've even engaged other cities to help us out. We have not heard a lot of feedback there. But we are continuing to look for a space that we now have a better idea what kind of building and location that we're looking for. We work with brokers and real estate and all of that, and we're always, that's probably the biggest challenge, challenge is evaluating the potential locations too, because there's always community engagement that comes along with it. We saw it with, early on, we saw it with the grocery store in 2019. We saw it with Mission, the Mission Street facility. We saw it with pop-up shelters at Garland. We saw it with the Women's Club on the South Hill. There are always issues when we try to locate a shelter somewhere in the city, and that's a challenge that we continue to work with. So just know how hard it is, the finding locations. We even, when we closed the shelter, put out an ask of the community at large. We said, "Community, help us find some locations. Help us meet this need, because we're struggling." And we've been struggling during the entire pandemic, finding needs. You know, we kept the Cannon Street Shelter open, but because of physical distancing, we couldn't keep all of those beds in one place. So we had to expand our footprint and find more square footage to replicate or keep those beds available for people. So that's why we moved into the library for a short time. Then we moved into the arena. We had pushback there. Thanks to the PFD for coming to our rescue there. None of the time. We ended up going to Mission. A lot of pushback there. We are always having to deal with that, and that's where, I could use your help. Council, I am asking for your help. This letter that you're going to look at or consider today, I saw. The very last line says, "This is a time, this is time of the essence, and we stand ready to help." Council, if you stand ready to help, I have an ask of you. Since this work is so challenging, I am going to ask each one of you in your district to provide me with a list of three locations in your district that we can use as shelters, that have already been vetted out, and I will stand with you to do the community engagement on that. But that's where I could really use your help.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for the update, Mayor. Couple questions for you. One would be, so 30 doses of Narcan were provided. How many referrals were issued for folks that were doing drugs in the facility? So that's one question. And then another, was there any amount of accountability for folks that did destroy public property? I'm just wondering, was there any follow-up, anything that kind of happened to hold them accountable for that destruction? And then I would love to hear from the PFD on the facility, in their mind, was there adequate space, adequate bathroom facilities? I've heard some narratives that we didn't provide good bathroom facilities. So I would just love to hear from, sure, on those points, kind of, from the PFD's point of view, how we could set, how we could have set this up better, or did we set this up as well as we could? Just like to hear more input on that.
I'm wondering if, for your first two questions, Councilmember Cathcart, if Fire Chief Shaker could answer those, because he was there pretty much every day, and many of his firefighters and EMTs and paramedics answered the call. So, Chief, can you?
Yep. So, in the case of emergency medical calls where Narcan is used, law enforcement isn't present, and that is the same with this incident. Even those times where law enforcement uses Narcan that they're issued, there is no follow-up from a law enforcement perspective that I'm familiar with. So the answer to the question in terms of citations or the other tools that they have, I don't believe those were utilized. The police officers that were on-site were outside purposely at the request of the leadership team, and they were called in when they were needed for law enforcement activity, like trespassing, serving warrants, or removing somebody. So I think, I think those are the questions, the questions about the accountability, I think, would best be responded from the PFD leadership.
So Chief, can I, just one thing to follow up on. So if, obviously, the first priority is getting folks out of the elements, but I think one of the other things we're trying to do is connect people to services. And I don't know of a better way to connect people to drug treatment than with a referral if they're doing drugs. So why would we not try to connect them to drug treatment when we've got them in this location, we know they're using? I mean, it seems like that would be a very easy thing. We're not talking about jail. We're not talking about anything. It's just a referral for drug treatment. Why would we not provide that?
The fire department doesn't do that, for one. We don't have a legal authority to refer, and in, within the confines of the space where we were operating, there were a number of nonprofit and specialty types of agencies that were present that were making those connections and trying to help. But you can only go so far. I don't know how many, I've probably taken care of well over, probably 2,000 people that have overdosed in my 32 years, and I would say the majority of those people do not want connected. In fact, they want to, they want to leave as soon as possible. And then, there's always a postictal period after someone temporarily recovers from an opiate overdose, and that is not the time to have any type of actual conversation with people where they'll remember, depending on how much damage was done from the apneic event. That always forthcoming, an event like that. So, I think that would be a question for law enforcement. We went from 100 to 300 visitors in a period of this much time, so the system had to flex on a holiday under really difficult circumstances, and I believe we did the best that we could with the resources that we had.
So, last question on that. I guess if we, and this is broadly speaking, if we, if our fire department or police are called to an overdose and they provide life-saving measures and bring that individual back, no referral issued, but is there a follow-up later on, kind of like we would do with a referral to, I mean, this is a person who overdosed. I mean, is there not a follow-up to try and get them into services?
No, it's a great question, and the answer is no. Many times, the people will stand up and walk away, and we have no legal right to detain them, even if they're not a Glasgow coma scale of 15, which is alert and appropriate to person, place, and time, with some other specific measures. But we don't have that authority to take over their rights at that point. So, you know, it's a fault of the system. I think what you bring up is, in the old days, yeah, yeah, we would. Law enforcement would respond. It was a very, very infrequent event where we would respond to overdoses. Today, if we don't have 10 today, many of those associated with cardiac arrest, I would be surprised. This occurs every day on our streets in Spokane. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stratton.
Thank you. One thing I wanted to ask, I remember last year, we utilized the arena. Am I correct? Was it last year when we did the arena? Two years ago, we did the arena.
Yeah, 2020.
So what's the, and I don't remember getting a report like this from the arena side on damages and that kind of thing. What do you think was different at the arena versus what's happened at the convention center? Is it just strictly numbers, too many people, not enough hands helping out, or is it something different?
I think, Councilmember Stratton, it's a number of things. The arena had the surfaces that were more accommodating to this type of operation. They have concrete floors. They may have had more security. I'm not sure about that. PFD might be able to answer that one. Is Mike waving his hand? I don't know. And we did not see the numbers at the arena that we saw at the convention center. Thanks.
Mike Gaffney.
This is Mike with the district. I'm the director of Facilities and Operations. At the arenas, we had a curfew up there. They didn't let people in, and I can't remember what time of night it was. I think it was 8 o'clock, but they did not let anybody in after that time. So, that was a major difference. And as you said, we were on concrete up there and cinder block walls, so we were back of the house, not front of the house like the homeless shelter we just had. So those were the main differences.
Councilmember Stratton, do you have further questions or comments?
No, we are just trying to figure out how to turn my hand off.
Lower your hand?
So, I don't, yeah.
Okay.
Hit the three dots. Okay.
I see a fresh hand from Councilmember Bingle, though, so, go ahead. Oh, but you're on mute. Still can't hear you.
Hey, there we go. Is that good?
Yep.
I'm perfect. Sorry, I was trying to help my teammate over here. But, so I have some questions and some comments, but first I want to give my perspective. So, Nicolette and I visited that facility three times. We were there on opening day. We went one time in the middle when we had over 300 people there, and then we went on the day that it was, that it was closing up. So, on the first day that it was open, there was only about 40 people there when we got there. Security, as they're coming through, they're checking them in, they're asking for COVID symptoms. It seemed to be like a very, very good space for what we were trying to do in that. The mats were ready, the services were ready, and we had, we had great hope on day number one. We walked through there. There was tons of very good food. I tried all of it myself just to make sure that what we were serving was very good. Outside of the coffee being sort of church coffee and a little watered down, everything seemed to be very good there. You know, as we went another time, when there was a lot more people there, I was very encouraged to see that CHAZ was there, that Frontier had been coming in, and while there were a lot more people, we opened up extra space, and there was space for people outside. So that was all very good. On the last day, you know, as everybody was leaving, I was somewhat appalled at the amount of destruction that had taken place there, the amount of garbage that was left behind. And not just garbage, brand-new blankets, brand-new coats, electric wheelchairs, all kinds of weapons. I mean, the amount of stuff that was left behind was really appalling to me. But, but for what it was, I thought our staff and I thought the fire department, all the people that were engaged did a very good job for two weeks. You know, we have some small critiques here and there, but for what it was, I thought we did a great job of helping to keep people off of the streets and not in those really, really frigid temperatures. With all that being said, I have a couple of questions for the administration, if we could. So, I was looking at your recommendations for facilities. How did we come up with the 20,000-square-foot number? And is that just in the building? Does that include extra land? How did we get to the 20,000-square-foot number? When it comes to the $90,000 worth of damages, is there an itemized list? Is there an invoice that we can get to see what those damages were and what they cost? Also, a, you know, a good breakdown of the $400,000, you know, an itemized breakdown of that would be wonderful. Sorry, I'm looking at my list here. And when it comes to the plan regarding that the shelter was published by September 30th, we were looking at the city website, and we couldn't find it. If we could, can we get a link to that plan that was published on September 30th? And then also, the data that was collected, can we get the data that was collected from the individuals that were there? So those are my questions on the facility there.
Maybe Sarah or Eric can speak to the size of the facility that we're looking for, that 20,000 square foot.
Sure, yeah. I'll speak to that, and I can speak to the data, and then clean up any others as desired. So, I, you know, and when we're flexible, you know, there's really, most of the things that are on our criteria list, I mean, again, you know, it becomes, you know, something that we can flex, you know, to do. But what we, what we saw in terms of both numbers and scale, as well as the need to have some type of isolation capabilities or the need to do social distancing, type of isolation capabilities, or the need to do social distancing, you know, due to COVID, which is, you know, again, unfortunately, on the rise again in our area, you know, that kind of helped shape, you know, where we are. I mean, we ended up kind of maxing, I think, just kind of, you know, somewhere between that 25,000 and 30,000-square-foot space at the convention center. Now, part of that was configuration and how it was used and otherwise, which, you know, just because they're using different ballrooms in between, you know, wasn't necessarily contiguous space. And so, you know, it had some challenges there. But that's kind of what framed, you know, that 20,000-square-foot recommendation. But we've been looking at things, as we've tried to be developing locations, that are anything from 10,000, honestly, up to, we looked at one that was 50,000 square foot. So, you know, we're open and flexible, but we do know that we have to kind of get something that has some size to it. On the data piece, we do have the data. We have kind of gone through a cleanup exercise just over this past couple of days, and so I'm happy to circulate that, you know, that information out today.
Thank you, Eric. And I have asked the PFD to submit their itemized list for the damages, and you, Council, will be getting an itemized statement for the costing heard on the city side for the shelter.
Johnny Perkins, your hands up. Is it in direct response to that, or is it something new? Because otherwise, Councilmember Canir has her hand up.
No, Council President, I just wanted to identify the 400,000. I will make sure that that summary is provided in a breakdown that Councilmember Bingle requested. Thank you.
Great. Okay, Councilmember Canir.
Thank you. And Mayor, thank you for this update. Thank you for the detail. I remember a couple of years ago, or maybe it was a year and a half ago, Council President and I visited a site over on Havana as a possibility for a shelter, and it was met with great resistance by the neighborhood. So you're exactly right. No matter where we cite something, we're going to get pushback. And I think it's incumbent upon all of us to not pit neighborhood against neighborhood, but indeed, make sure that people can be in a place that's safe, where we have services, not be congregated in one area. I've also spoken with, I spoke with Johnny Perkins last year about, let's not concentrate 100, 200, 300 people. Let's break it into smaller pieces so that it's more manageable. And he indicated, and Johnny, correct me if I'm wrong, but you indicated that it is a more expensive solution. But in the long run, considering what you've just presented to us, it may not be. So we may be looking at a space for 50 people or 60 people as Cannon Street, rather than 300. And I remember giving Johnny some suggestions about where to look. I don't know if those were viable solutions for him. And thirdly, I want to make sure that we're differentiating between low-barrier space that we need and an actual warming shelter. Because as you recall, when we passed that ordinance, we were talking about vulnerable and homeless individuals. We were talking about smoke, heat, cold, so all of those things. And last summer, we had cooling centers that were dispersed throughout the community. I staffed one of the ones in the Carousel Building, Jacoby and I did, and we got tourists in there, we got homeless people, we got citizens that lived downtown. We got a variety of people that were just coming in to get away from the heat, and we had water in there, we had tables, chairs, things to do, magazines, books, et cetera. That seemed to be a really good model, and I'd like to explore doing that again. And so we can separate the folks who actually need low-barrier space from the people that need to come in, get warm, for whatever reason. Their apartment might not have heat, or who knows. But I'd like to separate those two things. So we're looking at these two problems individually. And I'd also like to reconsider smaller spaces so that we're not congregating 300 people in a space. I think if you put Boy Scouts, 300 Boy Scouts in a space, you're going to see some damage and some mayhem, quite frankly. And I remember as a Girl Scout, if you put 300 of us in a space, that would have been a disaster as well. So I'd like to look at this a little differently with a different lens. But I do appreciate the effort. I also want to thank Chief Schaefer. I know you were there every day, and you were, you know, giving it 110%. So thank you for that, because that, and all of the staff, really. But that takes a lot to be treating people who, in a life-threatening situation. So thank you for that.
All right, I see Councilmember Stratton, and then Wilkerson, and then I think I saw Councilmembers Zepone. So Councilmember Stratton.
Thank you. The one thing that I do want to say, and Mayor, I'm going to take you up on your offer. And we do have buildings in the 3rd district that I've been looking at, so I will continue to do that in forward information. But the thing, I guess, that's frustrating for me is that as we have these discussions, we heard it yesterday, and I'm hearing a little bit of it today, is that if we look at neighborhoods, nobody wants it in their neighborhood. Neighborhoods are worried and scared, and I don't blame them. But if you recall, we had a number of us working on good neighbor agreements and trying to get a good neighbor agreement in place that we could use for situations like this. And I would really hope that as we continue down this road, that that good neighbor agreement, those discussions continue. Because I think you can have the neighborhood, you could have the nonprofit that, who's, you know, running the shelter, you could have the businesses in the community in that area sit down and agree to certain, certain things. And I think it's really important that if we're going to take this seriously, that we've got to make sure that people are held responsible in neighborhoods, especially in the neighborhoods. So I guess that's just my plea, is that we look at that good neighborhood, those good neighbor agreements, and get back on those. That's the problem with the Salvation Army. We couldn't get a good neighbor agreement. And we had a neighborhood that was pretty frustrated at the last emergency shelter that was open there. I think it would have been different had we, had we, those discussions been a little different and included a good neighbor agreement. So just on behalf of the neighborhoods, we're all going to take a share of this and work together to make it happen. But I do think it makes a big difference when we can have an agreement where everybody knows exactly what their responsibilities are.
All right, Councilmember Wilkerson, and then Zepone, and then Cathcart.
Thank you, Council President. So first of all, I really appreciate what the administration's done. It was last minute. I don't know if it had been planned for, if we already had an agreement with the convention center to stand this up and to extend this length of time. But as we're looking at a new site, my concern is, are we looking at providers to staff the site? That labor is a challenge. Councilmember Canir says we could do a scattered model. I agree, there are a significant number of mental health facilities that are already embedded in our various communities, and they are coexisting. But it is a more expensive model because it does require the staffing. So until we can get a building and partner with whoever we think's going to do this work, then we're going to still be stymied.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you everyone for presenting and answering some of our questions. I just want to say I do have a concern that we are focusing a lot on damages to the convention center instead of talking about the solutions and what has been done to look for a next solution. I think this focuses on dehumanizing people and painting them as criminals, when it sounds like we didn't have the appropriate resources for the center in the first place. This didn't happen at the convention, or at the arena, but it happened this time. People were on carpet. Sounds like a natural situation, that we created a situation for damages to occur. I know as a teacher, when half of my class failed a test, I don't blame my students for failing the test. I look at a reflection of my lesson and say, what can I do better? And I need to reteach. And so with that regard, I have a lot more questions about what are we doing next? I heard you're working on it, we looked at solutions, but I have not heard very many things that have been considered. And I would really appreciate more of an in-depth detail about why, if we're still looking at a 20,000-square-foot facility, and we can't find anywhere, why haven't we changed our criteria and started looking for different solutions? If I, I understand, in the neighborhood, if I saw something like the convention center coming to my next door, I would be nervous, too. But I think we need to change that model. And so I guess, one of my questions is just can you talk us through, more specifically, what other options have you been looking at, and why aren't they working?
I'm going to go to Eric Finch first, because my sense is he's maybe responding to someone else. So I'll go to him, and then Councilmember Cathcart.
Yes, and some of, you know, Councilmember Zepone's concerns, too. And I think that, you know, happy to continue to share, you know, more detail, you know, out as we can. But I can tell you that we've looked, you know, and for me, this was really kind of, you know, from November on, in terms of looking at both facilities and different uses. And we even put an RFP out, you know, that was looking at some surge capacity. And one of the things we actively solicited for was, you know, and a lot of this was direct conversations with people out in the community, was smaller space, the smaller space model. I have to say that a lot of the feedback we got was, and all the way down to the, okay, if a church has a wing where they have, you know, maybe, you know, 10 people they could put, or 20, you know, 20 people they could activate, because that's something that we've seen, you know, other communities do. So I have to say, overwhelmingly, from the homeless coalition, from a lot of the, you know, the religious community, or other organizations, some of the feedback that we got, and again, this is all positive feedback. It wasn't necessarily, you know, that any of this was unduly negative, but it was like, hey, look, the small system model could have a lot of challenges in terms of how you deliver services. And sometimes there's, I think, you know, people, in the goodness of their heart, are trying to do something, you know, good for the community, they don't necessarily understand the level of, you know, kind of support that they're going to have to do for, you know, some members of our community that might, you know, that might be part of this population. So I think that that was just, that was just some of the feedback that got taken on board. We have been active, you know, I've looked at anything from 5,000 square feet, you know, all the way up. But what I would submit to you in terms of what we're just trying to kind of take on board in terms of lessons, as well as things that give us options, is that in that next space we want to get, I do want to make sure we have enough size to it, if at all possible, so that as we continue to look at other solutions or a more diverse model, that at least we have some space that has, I think, more configurability or flexibility for us to use. So again, if we had, if we equally had like a 5,000-square-foot space or a 20,000-square-foot space available to me, I might opt for that 20,000-square-foot one first, simply because it gives us flexibility in the system. Now, I think that if, I would love to be faced with a situation of having two options that I could bring back to you all and say, hey, we could activate these two locations. I can tell you that at least since November, I've not found one yet. So, you know, I think that we've got some, actually, you know, scarily close candidates, you know, that, you know, we're looking to be able to ensure, you know, over this next week or so. But, you know, the reality of it is, is that it has been a very, very challenging search. And I've not been able to see the service model yet, you know, where we've been able to, where I think we could confidently, you know, if we were trying to put 20 people at 10 or 15 locations, that is an awful lot, you know, to coordinate and organize, especially from the service side. So that has been on the president of mine. We didn't want to set up a, we didn't want to set up something that would fail in terms of that service delivery piece. So we'll go quiet there, as I saw the mayor also raised her hand for giving some feedback.
Yeah, I'm going to go to Mayor Wilkerson.
Is that okay if I speak?
Yeah, no, I'm calling it in. Yeah.
Okay, okay, sorry. We have explored many of those options that Eric mentioned. A lot of the commercial properties that even constituents send our way as options to look at, oftentimes, the owners don't want the use of a shelter in their space. So there are all kinds of challenges. But I do want to address, Councilmember, member Zepone, your comment about criminalizing and dehumanizing. That's not the intent here at all. This is a human issue, and we needed to look at lessons that were learned during this operation. And I think what the lessons also learned show us is how challenging the population that we served over those two weeks is to serve. And those are considerations moving forward that we need to be able to learn from. So that was the intent of that. It's not to dehumanize, it's just to be transparent and to show the challenges, and to look through a human lens, at a human issue. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go to Councilmember Cathcart, and then Councilmember Bingle. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. So a couple of things. So first, we still haven't heard from the PFD. We're 40, 50 minutes in. I definitely want to make sure we don't skip over that. And we heard, again, you know, inadequate facilities. And so I'd like to hear from the PFD, is that actually the case? Did we not provide adequate facilities? And that's the reason for the destruction. So I'd like to hear that. But furthermore, I just want to double down on the comments that Councilwoman Stratton made about good neighbor agreements. Because, you know, I think those discussions ended in November, or kind of went on pause in November, after the conclusion of the Salvation Army discussions. And had we come to an agreement on a solid good neighbor agreement, I think we probably would have been able to quickly find a location, because it just mitigates all the problems that we're dealing with. And so I just really hope that we can continue those conversations, set something up that can be a citywide policy that keeps neighbors safe and creates those expectations and provides certainty for the providers. And, I mean, we can do this. Other cities have done it, we can do it, there's no reason not to. So I would just double down, good neighbor agreements are definitely the way to go. But the last question I have, and I'm not really sure who to direct this to, but there were 60 or so individuals who were offered access to services at the conclusion of the convention center and refused or declined. So if there's a group, we've offered services, there's a group that will not do it, and they prefer to camp outside, we're going to have to come up with some sort of a solution to address that. Because whether it's just leaving them in the elements to suffer, that's certainly not acceptable or an option, or whether it's that they're creating issues for residents and commercial property owners. So, you know, whether it's their safety or the impacts on the rest of the community, it's just not really an acceptable option to have them camping outside. So how do we address those, that group of individuals who declined the offer for additional services?
Let me just take a moment, then. We did hear from Mike at the PFD already, but if there's anyone else at the PFD that wants to address Councilmember Cathcart's kind of question of, were the facilities a good match for the situation? Feel free, Stephanie, or anyone else, and then I'll go to Councilmember Bingle.
Sure, I can jump in. Can you, can you guys hear me? Okay. I apologize, I am actually on vacation, so I am getting a little bit of an echo, so I'll do the best I can here. So I did debrief my board yesterday, so I'll just share a little bit of what I shared with them. So the first thing is, you know, the PFD, we always want to support the community, and I think not only do we want to do that, but as public venues, we have a responsibility to do that. So anytime we're asked, and we've actually been able to do it, as you know, a couple of times over the last two years. This time, the only space we had available was the ballroom. We had, we were set up for a volleyball event on the last week of December in the exhibit hall. So we definitely would have put this in the exhibit halls if we were able to. But the ballroom was the only choice we had. We have never really had issues in the past, a few small issues, but nothing very serious. So we didn't really think it would be a problem. It wasn't ideal, but we weren't, we obviously didn't expect the damage that we saw. Obviously, this shelter, which we've all discussed now, attracted a different population who probably doesn't usually use the shelters. And so it was a different experience for all of us. We definitely expected some issues, and we were prepared with our planning and security and ways to protect the building. We had bike rack areas off and locked areas off to keep it as safe as possible for everyone. But we obviously could not have been prepared for what ended up happening. I have seen some criticism of us, that how did the PFD allow this to happen? You know, why would we allow all this damage to happen? And we obviously are not first responders. We don't, we're not trained in working with this population. We're really, really good at planning events, but this is obviously not anything we've ever been faced with before. And we would turn the shelter over at night to security and to the police and to the guardians. So I would venture to guess, and my staff that was actually in the space a lot can back this up, or add to this, that when you have 300 people, like we've already discussed, you have 300 people in a space, and when someone's urinating right in front of you, I don't really know what you do, right? I don't really, we don't know what to do with that. So it was a lot, I think, a lot more difficult than people realize. So it was a lot, I think, a lot more difficult than people realize. I will say the city has been extremely responsive and supportive to us. We can't thank them enough. Everybody on this call stepped up and helped us every time we needed it. But we've definitely been left with, with devastation, and I, and I don't even think unless you see it, you could even believe it. Fortunately, January is our slowest month, so we do have about two to three weeks until our next event in that space. We had one event we were able to move to the other side of the campus. But it's going to take every hour of those weeks to get our building back. We've already had a client this morning, want a book with us for next year, and required that we put in our contract that we will not have a homeless shelter during their event. So it's, there's an impact that we're starting to see where, you know, people are going to start getting worried about this. So I know that's not the goal, I know the whole point of this call is for the city and the council to get together and, and figure out a different alternative than using the PFD's buildings. But what I explained to my board yesterday was, as bad as this has been, and as hard as it has been on my staff, I do believe this is going to be a catalyst for all of us moving together. And it already sounds like you have some great solutions already to move, to move. You know, we've learned a lot, I think that there was a lot of things that were theories, you know, should we put a big shelter somewhere? Should it be downtown close to services? Should we put, you know, porta potties throughout downtown? And I think that this shelter showed us that those, those probably are not the best ideas to have everybody together in one spot, in, in a neighborhood or in a downtown core. We saw what happened when we put porta potties there, I mean, and they used the STA bus terminal as a drug dealing facility and drug-using facility. So I think we know that if we put porta potties all over downtown, that's probably what's going to happen. So in a way, I think that, you know, it's kind of a, there's been theories out there, and we now actually got to see them in action. So I'm, I'm hoping that it can be a positive, positive thing moving forward. Short-term pain for this long-term game is kind of what I told my board. So I do have a couple of people on the call that actually worked in the facility that might want to add, Gay or Nick might want to add to that. And then of course, we can answer any ques, excuse me, questions.
Yeah, go ahead, if you want to add something.
Yeah, this is Nick with the PFD. Pretty much, kind of what Stephanie said, you know, we are trained in crowd management and, you know, we deal with all kinds of different events, but this was just a little outside of our realm. So I think we did take the first, you know, portion of it to kind of get our bearings and understand, you know, what, what we're actually dealing with, especially in a new space. So, I mean, Stephanie pretty much covered it, but, you know, a lot of lessons, lessons learned, but, you know, hopefully moving in the future, we have a, a different solution. Gay, was there anything that you wanted to add?
Good afternoon, Gay Finer here. And I work the shelter every day except for one, and most of those days were nights. So I'm more than welcome any of your questions that I could answer. From a human element, I would like to share with you, one of the days I did not work at the shelter, I was at the arena, and I happened to answer a telephone call from a gal hoping to find her brother that she thought might be staying at the shelter. I asked her to send me a picture of him to my cellphone, thinking there was no way I was ever going to find this guy. And one night or one day, I happened to be there, and this gentleman came up to me and said, I'm trying to figure out how to get a social security card, can you help me with that? And as I tried to point him to staff that could maybe assist him with that, I asked him his name, and lo and behold, it was this girl's brother, if you can believe that. The chances of that happening were just incredible. And what came out of that is, between her and I and the guardians, she bought him a bus ticket, he ended up at the Greyhound, and now he is home in the care of his family in Clarkston, Washington. But any sort of firsthand experience questions? I can tell you, Nick and I were there every day, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have about our experience. So thank you for inviting us.
Thanks for being here. And people can raise their hands if they have questions. I'm going to go to Councilmember Bingle, and then Mayor, I'm thinking your hand is left over from before, unless you have another thing. And then Councilmember Kinnear. Councilmember Bingle.
Thank you very much. So, yeah, I have a, a couple of questions for the people who are there every day. So we heard, we've spoken to a lot of providers who, you know, have given us some inside answers to why we could have had so many people there when we were only expecting, you know, 150 in there. And they're all very compelling and good reasons. One of the reasons that we were given seemed odd to me. They said that it, at, at one point, there was a DJ that was there. Do we have a DJ at any point during this?
I can speak to that. We had a wonderful senior citizen named Dan, and I do have his card. And he happened to show up there on a voluntary basis and ask if he could play music for folks. And I honestly thought it was wonderful. It calmed people down, because, you know, there were times it was extremely tense situation. And that gentleman came down on his own and set up his speaker and played music.
One of the things that we heard as we were talking to people is that maybe some activities would help to occupy some people's minds. You know, they, they mentioned crayons, playing cards, those kinds of things. And so I think it does help to occupy people's minds, because we didn't, you know, there were no TVs, there was nothing. And so having, I mean, just sitting in there for, you know, two weeks with nothing to do, I can see how people could get stir crazy, so. And then this, I'm not exactly sure who would answer this question well, but how many people that wanted shelter didn't have space available as it shut down? How many people that wanted shelter didn't, there wasn't space available for them?
I don't know if anyone has that, but particularly by, I don't, my only comment is, is it kind of depends whether you're a woman or a man, or you're a young adult or not, but, but it sounds like maybe Eric can talk to that.
Yes, so, so the last census count was like, you know, you know, 150 on the last night. You know, we'd actively worked for several days in matching up, you know, to, you know, again, there's been wide debate in terms of the capacity in the system, and I, and I get that. But for at least the beds we had, we were trying to do the matchups as best we could there. And we were trying to do it based on acuity, in terms of, you know, people that we thought we would have, you know, I think, a little bit more challenge, you know, you know, in terms of kind of returning to kind of the, you know, the environment, you know, that were, or camps or otherwise that they'd been at. We wanted to make sure that we, we, we kind of, you know, gave those, those best kind of alignment options as we could. So, you know, I think of the morning of, which, you know, I was there most of that Sunday morning, was, you know, I, I, you know, I, I think that there was, you know, there's some good, you know, last minute lashups. There was, you know, I think, you know, a good, you know, I want to say 40 or 50 that, you know, that were really, I think, you know, moving back to a camping environment. And then there was probably, you know, you know, I think, a somewhat similar number to that, that had basically were just kind of going back, you know, out on their own. So, you know, I, I think there was, there was likewise number, it was, I think, a top 40, that we were able to do. And we, and I say we, I say community we, it wasn't just the city, it wasn't just, just providers. There were people actively there from the community there, Salem Lutheran is, is an example, you know, was there, you know, trying to do, you know, kind of, you know, those local matchups. And to a degree, at least one of those, you know, you know, organizations, I know, set up some space, you know, again, at that small scale level, to help assist. So there certainly was still some that, that went out. It was, I think, less than we had feared, but it still was obviously, you know, a, a larger number than potentially we wanted.
So your best guess on that, of people who wanted shelter space that were not able to get shelter space, is somewhere in between 40 and 50? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, but that could be widely debated, because I think at the end of the day, there, there are folks that are opting out, or that they have a different perspective of what low barrier is from their individual ends. And so that, that, that's what makes the, the, the kind of, that perspective pretty hard to, to make, I think, as a real data point.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Kinnear, and then Councilmembers Zabon.
Thank you. So as we're going forward, I don't mean to wrap this up, but I'm just trying to get a bigger picture here. As we're moving forward, we need to solve the immediate problems of people who do not have shelter. But at the same time, we also need to figure out how to make homelessness brief and infrequent. And I think that piece has been lost in the conversation, because we're going to need to work upstream to keep this from happening, so that we don't add to the numbers that are already there. And this is not necessarily what government does best, that is the challenge. So I would like to, at the same time, you know, two prongs, at the same time we're trying to get people into shelter and services, the second thing we need to do is find out how we can work upstream, so we can keep this from reoccurring and from having yet another generation of people living on our streets. So those are my goals. Thank you.
Councilmembers Zabon.
Yeah, I definitely agree with Councilmember Kinnear, and do want to reiterate that I'm extremely grateful for the PFD and everybody who helped solve an immediate crisis. And people would have died if this didn't get, did not get stood up. So I want to express that gratefulness for everyone who worked really hard on that. I, I just want to ask some questions around what we could do to mitigate this from happening again, so it never comes to a crisis situation where we have to go find an immediate shelter the next day. Council has passed ordinances to prevent this situation from happening. And I'm trying to understand the disconnect from the ordinances that we have passed and policies that we passed to prevent this from happening, and why it's not happening. For example, we wanted a, a plan by September 30th for emergency shelters. I heard that you were asking around in November, well past the September 30th deadline, for those shelters, looking for them. So why didn't that happen back in June, July, August, much earlier? I heard that we didn't know how many people were going to show up at the shelters, and yet we have asked that we need a report quarterly of the average number of homeless people in our community, of unsheltered people in our community, that would give us an idea of how many people we could expect to show up to our emergency shelters. I'm still confused about what we're going to do if temperatures drop and shelters are capacity. And we have an ordinance that says that people are going to be in immediate danger, and what are we going to do tomorrow if that happens? And the last one is just ongoing contracts, and that we're not supposed to be reducing shelter beds. So those are the ordinances and the way that we have approached this. And I would love to hear from the administration, from you all, about where that disconnect is coming from.
Hey, this is Sarah Nuss, the Emergency Management Director. Thank you, Councilmembers Zabon. I'm going to go ahead and answer the first question, and then I will kick the others to some other folks. So you're new, so you might not know this, I'm just going to give some background. I've been tapped to help with some of this work, some of it falls under Emergency Management. In fact, I was involved with the cooling centers previously, and then the Safer Air Center last year. I was not here when we did the arena work, I came on after that. But as I've said to multiple council members, and now I will say on record for the rest of you folks, I have been working on this since before the cooling centers, before the heat situation that we had this summer. That's, I have been calling facilities for months, you know, quite, quite bummed and disappointed that we aren't able to connect more with our faith-based organizations in the community and find a solution for this. In fact, I didn't pipe up earlier, because some of our other folks talked, but, you know, trying to find one big space has not necessarily been the goal. You know, I've been looking for multiple spaces that we can use for these emergency needs. The reason that we couldn't find anywhere for the cooling center is that folks, again, as we've mentioned on this call multiple times, didn't want to post this resource, which is why we were forced to use, you know, the carousel at, at the Riverfront Park and some other resources, you know, because we couldn't get anyone to partner with us. I have a pretty exhaustive list, and there's plenty of documentation in my email and my call records to show that I have been actively reaching out from, to a point of fatigue and disappointment from our partners, but there has not been a lack of time abroad looking for a facility. We do have plans in place for all the rest of the protocols, you know, providers, security, meals, all of that. There are plans in place for that. That was not a challenge for this activation, nor was it for cooling centers. We have all those things in place. Finding the facility has always been the biggest challenge. And I think that's sort of why Mayor and the rest of our team have brought up some of the challenges with the demographic and what we've seen at the previous activation, is that is now adding further challenge to us in trying to find partners to work with us for a facility. I do know, and I will say, that we are looking right now for resources to have a facility available for a period of time. You know, we're looking at a longer lease, ability to use a resource, so we can ramp that up for warming centers now, potentially cooling centers in the summer when we need it. And if for some reason we need a safer air center, the goal is to leverage this facility for that too, while work is ongoing in the homelessness system build. And I, I can't speak to that, because I don't really work in our existing shelter system sphere. But the goal is, again, to have this resource in place, that we don't have, you know, an emergency yet, like we just did, where we didn't have a facility. And again, it wasn't because work isn't going on, it's because we're not able to find anyone that will work with us. I did have to kick up a request, which you all are aware of, formally to the state, which is basically, you know, once we've exhausted all of our resources at a local level, looking for a resource like a shelter facility or otherwise, we could get up to the county, and they, they help us as well. And when they can't, they could get up to the state on our behalf. And in that request, I did put, you know, we are looking for X amount of square feet to accommodate X amount of potential guests. We are willing to look at that in multiple facilities. However, ideally having one lease and one place for folks to go around these parameters, you know, that are pretty specific, has been a difficult challenge, and they have not come forward with more, many resources for us, to be honest. We've been sussing through everything that's come from council, the community, you name it, I've called them. That's not to say there aren't places that we don't know of, you know, which is why we finally asked the community for help and asked the state for help. We do have a few candidates in the queue that we're working on right now, but the goal is to have something in place, so that we can stand this up to meet the emergency ordinance as needed over the next X amount of months, while our homelessness division, CHHS, works on building the rest of the system. So I'm going to pause there and let everyone else answer the rest of your questions. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember.
Oh, if you're, if you're answering, go ahead.
All I was going to add, because Sarah did a good, good, you know, wrap-up that I think includes the CHHS piece. You know, I, I would be remiss if I didn't also point out that we've, you know, obviously had some internal staff challenges, and, and to a point, you know, when, when we think about that, you know, kind of, you know, September and October standpoint of last year, we, we actually got down to the point where there was zero people in the, the Human Services part of CHHS. That's, that's, that's an excuse, not a reason, right? I mean, you know, that, that, you know, doesn't, you know, help us necessarily solve the problem. But I, I do, you know, need to make sure that, that we do ground ourselves about the fact that we're going through our own internal staff challenges, which, you know, we're, we're in a better place now. We've, you know, fired, hired four staff, we've got, you know, a new director on board as of last week. And so all those things help us in terms of, I think, you know, doing the, the other part, and then all, all in there, because I, I know we're, we're at time. But I'm happy to have those, and I've got your, your, your message, you know, Councilmember Zabon, so we'll spend some time one-on-one to kind of help give the background. But I think taking the overall look, the holistic look at the system, as several of you have mentioned and been chapping in for, for some time, is absolutely essential. Because, you know, it, it's, it's not just all about the emergency shelter piece. You know, there's, there's, each of the providers talks about double digits that are potentially ready to move on to that next place, but there's no next place available for them to move on to within the system. So doing that holistic look and trying to figure out, you know, how we, how we do that better, it's certainly got to be part of the mix. So it doesn't answer all, all those questions, and happy to get off one-on-one with you, you know, as, as, as your schedule permits.
Councilmember Cathcart. I was, wait, Sarah, did you have something you wanted to add? I didn't know if I saw your hand.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to add that I'm also happy to sit down with any of you one-on-one and, and follow up on some of this. You know, right now, we're kind of all hands on deck, actually trying to make something happen and put it in place. But as always, I am an open book and would be happy to follow up on any of the work I've done on this.
Thanks, Sarah. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. I, you know, I think the intermediate plan that's in place, you know, identifying a quick location that can be used for emergencies while we kind of figure out a more permanent solution, and perhaps other, other policies and investments around the issue, I think that makes a lot of sense to me. But one thing I think hasn't really been mentioned, Councilwoman Kinnear mentioned been mentioned, Councilwoman Kinnear mentioned the idea of these smaller shelter sites, which, you know, I think does make a lot of sense. But I think it makes sense in the context of a regional homelessness response, which really is, I think, what we need to be gearing towards. Because there are individuals experiencing homelessness, not just in the city of Spokane, but in many communities around the county and probably outside the county and including that as well. And so we need to make sure that, I think, there's contributions from everybody. And if we're going to do small-site shelters, which, again, I think is the best way to actually get people exiting homelessness, because you can really work more one-on-one or in smaller groups with individuals to help them take that next step, I think the idea is that you would have these located throughout the region and not necessarily throughout many neighborhoods in the city or different parts of the city, but that the city would be a partner with other municipalities, the county, et cetera, to set these up. So I think that's got to be the other aspect of this. So hopefully we can resume the regional discussions on homelessness, get those going again. That's got to happen. Because I think the only way that we really are going to make a dent is if we're all kind of working together. And so nobody had mentioned the regional aspect of this. And I know the mayor's had those conversations in the past. But I think that's going to have to be how we tackle this, this big issue.
And after the mayor goes, I'll add some to that, too. Mayor Woodward?
Thanks for bringing that up, Councilmember. Oh, is that okay? Bye. Councilmember Cathcart, I appreciate that. Those conversations at the regional level will continue. I would like to involve more municipalities into that conversation outside of the county and in Spokane Valley and the city of Spokane. Because as you mentioned, this is a regional issue, and every city in our region is experiencing homelessness. But the resources and services fall have fallen in the past on the city, and we need to keep having those conversations. You may remember as we were planning the young adult shelter, I wanted to work with the valley to locate that young adult shelter in the valley. But I did receive criticism from many of this council for wanting to do that. And we ended up locating it in the city. So that's always at the forefront of my mind, is to include other cities and to be able to locate shelters in other cities as well. Didn't work with young adults, but that's a conversation that I will continue to have.
I'm going to go to Eric Finch and then Chief Schaefer, because I'm assuming you're responding to what's going on. Yeah, so go ahead.
Thank you. And again, just as a sort of go item, because I think the challenge really is, you know, again, how do we, you know, continue to improve and rebuild a plane that is in flight, right, you know, and things that are, you know, happening daily and need to be done daily. But, you know, to that end, you know, the city and the COC, the Continuum of Care Board, you know, on the 25th, you know, we'll be doing kind of like a leadership retreat, a planning retreat, where, again, this roadmap that I kind of mentioned in the chat text, you know, is going to be part of that discussion. And, you know, through a lot of, you know, I think, discussions that have happened over this past, you know, frankly, years, but just even in this past few months, you know, the county is going to be an active, you know, planner. We have, you know, active agreement. You know, I think both of the staff as well as the elected levels, you know, that we might not make, always make decisions together as the county and the biggest city in the county, but we need to plan together. If we don't plan together, then we're just, you know, that some of those decisions are not going to, are not going to be as sound as they could be. But the city of the valley will be active participants. We even have, you know, even someone from Airway Heights, as well as, you know, some of our state partners. So, you know, the intent for this is to start doing some of this kind of more long-term planning and looking at these 30 different systems, you know, that we see, you know, in the ecosystem, so that we can, I think, make better, I think, goal decisions and outcomes that we're looking for, how they tie together, and then ultimately how they get funded, you know, so that, you know, I think that, you know, at the end of the day, we are a major funder, as the county and the state and the federal side, of course. But how do we kind of leverage all that better together? So that is, you know, again, it's just a planning retreat, but to my view, it really starts a six-month process of updating, you know, ours and the COCs and to a degree, frankly, you know, everyone's, I think, five-year perspective, you know, from the strategic planning aspect of what we're trying to do. And then we would obviously be working all that to bring that back to our electeds, you know, for review input and discussion.
Chief Schaefer, you had something to add?
I just would like to take the opportunity to ground truth, the comment about the need for regional solutions that was expressed by Councilmember Cathcart and the Mayor Woodward. Being on the ground, we, first couple days of the center when it opened, there were unusual surges that happened. We would have vehicles that would arrive, and we would get 20 to 30 people. And I had the opportunity to talk to those people. They were from camps in Meade, camps in Spokane Valley, and camps on the west side of Spokane outside of the jurisdiction. So essentially, people were being bused into the shelter that we had established in downtown Spokane. So I normally take that information when I hear it as anecdotal, but I had the opportunity to actually witness it and speak to the people as they were leaving their transport. So I just thought I'd set that as a message to kind of help ground truth that belief. Thank you.
Thanks. And, you know, luckily their lives were saved. But again, just points out that we need that. I think we're, the mayor and I spoke yesterday, and we're trying to get Spokane County back to the table to talk about this. So I hope we're successful in that. Councilmember Cathcart, is your hand still up? Or is that left over? Okay. Other questions? Councilmembers Zepone?
Yeah, just really quick. I do appreciate the offer to meet up time and go deeper. But I also think that a lot of the questions that I'm asking is from feedback that I'm getting from community members who are concerned. And I think it would be helpful if we had updates to the community regularly so that they know what's going on to the public. And I know other council members also have most of the same concern. And so I think maybe a one-on-one conversation might not be the most use of your time to repeat yourself over and over and over, and that it might be better to maybe report back to this group and to the community so we know what's going on. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, and we can do both. So I took them as saying they're willing to sit down with you, but they're willing to come back. And we obviously haven't really had, and I have tons of questions. We don't have time to get to them all today. I have a couple that I'll ask, and then we'll get to the letter. First question that I think is pretty imminent, because it's still pretty cold out, and it'll get cold again. I had heard, Eric, that on Friday before the Sunday closing, Catholic Charities offered us three first floors at some of their facilities that could have housed 25 to 30 each if we would deploy the guardians staff. They didn't have the staff to do it. So I really have kind of a two-part question of, one, did you understand that that's what they were offering? And what were the obstacles to getting that done before we closed the center, since we're down to 150 people? And that would have covered, if you add it with the people you were able to rehouse, that would have been just about all the people. And secondly, if that wasn't possible, what follow-up conversations are you having with them so that the next cold snap, I mean, a lot of people think it's cold enough right now to justify it, which it probably is, that we can just at least move 90 people out of living in the elements and into a supervised shelter in a smaller situation that seems more manageable? So wondering what you can tell us about that, Eric?
Well, yeah. And so I can tell you what I know. And I think to a certain degree, we might have to, you know, discuss with Catholic Charities just to make sure that if my perspective or what I've heard is different, then we can balance that. Because certainly as we were going through daily conversations, you know, with all the providers in terms of what was in the realm of possible, you know, none of my discussions with Dina, Sharon, or Jonathan at Catholic Charities, you know, ever had that flavor to it. And they were also experiencing, obviously, at House of Charities, that, you know, COVID outbreak at the same time, which removed 35 beds from their system because they had to go back to some greater level of distancing. So, you know, at a couple of their havens, there has been conversations about, you know, trying to activate. But their stated preference was, you know, that they would open those kind of, I mean, it was like, it was the ones that were kind of specialized on the women's side, and it was to address, you know, I think, some of the women's capacity needs. But it was more in the 20 to 24 capacity. And that, and their preference was, you know, that if VOA, you know, would be able to have, you know, that would be the, you know, staffing that would run it because of their expertise, obviously, with the women's category. So there's certainly a difference there in terms of, you know, what we heard. And frankly, Council President, we just, I would just have to balance that by, you know, asking some questions and finding out why we were hearing, you know, I think, two different things. But the other part of it is that that is part of the ongoing part, where we are actively looking with them in terms of what we can stand up, you know, specific to that. Now, VOA obviously has its own staffing challenges. You know, they've just basically gotten up to, you know, to their full capacity, you know, at Hope House, from a staffing perspective of what they've had. So, you know, but I'm willing to talk, you know, with Catholic Charities about the guardians, although that hasn't been, I think, their stated preference in the past. You know, I think everyone understands. And we've had some active conversations, including, you know, at the mayor level in terms of really asking for people to kind of work outside their normal, you know, kind of, you know, business rules or how they normally would try to, you know, to run things to help us. So that's been an active part of the conversation. And we certainly can close that loop. But I've not had a conversation from Catholic Charities where they had a capacity of up to that 90 number. So I'll have to circle back and get your ground truth on that.
All right. Yeah, I hope you do, because I had a conversation a couple days ago. And I think they, you know, they mentioned that there wasn't that much time before Sunday, but I think it's worth following up, because it sounded to me 25 to 30 each with an outside contractor. And again, every space helps. And I know that particularly women's sites are very hard to get right now. So that's that question. Then, secondly, I'll just, this will be my last thing, and it's really for you, Mayor, regarding your request for our help on finding locations. I'm super ready to take on that challenge with you. I think it helps that I'm elected citywide instead of district-wide, so maybe I'm in a better position to do that. But, you know, when we were looking at the young adult shelters, locations, I had access to our real estate, it wasn't really our real estate broker is probably why I had access to it, but it was a real estate broker. And I saw lots of different sites and was able to give input. And I think the site that we eventually found was a pretty darn good compromise, right on the border of the Spokane Valley and the city. So out of the downtown core, near educational opportunities. But the list of sites, and there were plenty of them, where the landlord was willing to enter into an agreement with the city for homeless services, either as a rental or as a purchase. And I don't know that we all, mayor's office and council's office always agreed on what would be the better or not. But if we can get access to the current broker and the locations, because none of us are real estate brokers, we don't have access to the multiple listing service and things like that. If we can get access to all those potential things, then I at least commit to giving you a robust list of places that I'm willing to suggest and put my name behind, because I think partly that's what you're saying. It's like, all right, it's fine for the, for us to tell you, oh, try this site, but are you going to put your name behind it? And I will put my name behind it. But I need access to the broker and the list of places in order to do that. So if you can provide that, I will do that. Any more questions for the administration? We have this letter to discuss briefly. Okay, I'm not seeing any. And I do, I just want to extend my great appreciation to you, Mayor Woodward, and to your key staff people for coming and the PFD people for coming and discussing. It's a challenging issue. All of us are being bombarded with questions and often criticisms. And it is like any other big social problem in our society. It's huge. And cities have some tools and some resources, but not enough, I think, in our judgment. And yet, we're the ones working on it. And so people are going to hold us accountable to it and call it a task. So I appreciate everyone coming and having a spirit of collaboration. And I hope that we continue with that, because that's the only way we're going to get there. And there's just so much more to be done. And the last thing I just want to say before we kind of excuse our administration partners, if they want to be excused, is I get a little disturbed when we, there's a handful of people that cause a lot of problems. And there's lots of reasons why they do. They might have a behavioral health issue, or trauma, or something else. But we tend to overgeneralize in these conversations. And so, you know, there were 300 people at the convention center. Not all 300 people were causing damage. That was not. And I doubt it was the majority. But there were some that caused some serious damage. And I just encourage people not to extrapolate and overgeneralize. Because in my experience, when I've visited shelters and talked with people on the street who are homeless, the vast majority of them have simply lost their housing. And they're bewildered of how they got to this situation. And frankly, are feeling a little bit disaffected of a community that would allow that to happen to anyone. And yet, there are a few people that, for whatever reason, are particularly disruptive and challenging. And they take a special kind of service and care and staffing. And I think a lot of our challenge is going to be separating those two groups so that they each get what they need. But I just hope that people who have listened to this presentation or watched the news, don't make the assumption that when they see someone who's carrying a backpack, because they have no house to live in, in cold weather, that they are disruptive, that they are criminal, that they are drug addicts. And even the folks that are disruptive and have committed crimes and have substance abuse issues, they are still people, and they just need more intensive services. So I just want to leave people with that, because I don't want people to get the wrong impression on it. But with that, I just wanted, Councilmember Zepone and Stratton had given us a letter to just kind of be a bit of a council statement for those who are willing to sign. And I just wanted to put that out for discussion of any council members. And then afterwards, we'll have a vote on who wants to sign it or not, just because the community has been asking us for a statement in response to this crisis. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I guess my question is, has the letter changed? I mean, since the mayor has responded to quite a few of the points that were included, and a lot of, some of it may not be relevant. So has the letter changed, been amended? Are there any suggestions, changes there?
This particular letter, I don't know, is that the one that the mayor got previously? Obviously, it was prepared before today's presentation. But I will, I guess, defer to Councilmember Zepone, who is the laboring or with Councilmember, or Councilmember Stratton, to give us any, whether you think there's anything significant that would be changed based on the conversation today.
So I, and then I'll tap on just a couple words, and then I'll hand it over. I think what's important about this letter that you're presenting is we've all received so many comments, these hundreds of emails regarding what's going on. We've had just this last week with the condenses that are closing, more and more people concerned about what are the roles. There seems to be a lot of confusion about what council does and what the administration does, and where are they adding all of this. So this was simply trying to lay out, this is how this works. This is what we mean. This is what we've done. And I don't think the letter has changed. I think that it really is reiterating what council has passed, policies we've laid in place, and that that is our role. And then there's the administration case as well. But for my part of this, it was mainly to have something to say, this is what council has done. And this is the, now it's in the administration hands, this is how this works. And that was the purpose of it, was to kind of share those, the different descriptions of the administration and the council. I don't think it's changed. And I'll hand it over to Zach. But I would really like to have something available that when individuals call and write and stop me on the street or stop me at Safeway, to say, hey, you know, we wrote this down. This is the gist of it right here. These are the roles and responsibilities. So I'll hand it to Zach.
Yep, I agree with all of that. Maybe just add that, you know, we have the council are thinking about this and concerned too. And we're not, we're not for the side of doing nothing.
And thank you both for working so hard on this. Really appreciate it. Other council commentary, just on the letter?
Yeah, have my hand up.
Oh, I am sorry, Councilmember Kinnear. I didn't see that hand. You were on to my left of my screen. And then Councilmember Wilkerson. Councilmember Kinnear?
Yeah. Thank you. It's my, the hand is too little, too yellow. Yeah. So I want to back up for just a minute. I appreciate both Councilmember Stratton and Zepone working on this. I was frustrated with the lack of response that, as Councilmember Stratton indicated, we were just getting barraged with people who were angry, what are you doing? Why isn't, why isn't this being handled better? And my frustration was, there was no coordinated effort from the city council to respond to that. So I took it upon myself to write a news release on Sunday afternoon, and I sent it to you, Council President, to somehow get a response out there as quickly as possible. And so it didn't happen on Monday. We, the lack of coordination, the lack of communication was inadequate as far as I was concerned. It was very frustrating. You know, Councilmember Stratton was frustrated... You know, Councilmember Stratton was frustrated, I haven't been able to talk to her yet about it, I was hoping I could before this meeting. And I want to make sure that going forward, that we're as inclusive and coordinated as possible. This letter is great, it outlines exactly what we should be doing going forward, that the effort, I was hoping, should, would be more coordinated. So it is my wish, my hope, my plea for us as a council to have a more unified communication because we were all getting the same emails, the same concerns, the same people stopping us and saying, what the heck are you people doing? So I think this is relevant, I think we should pass it, and we should sign on to it, and I appreciate their effort because, and I was hoping that we could do this by Monday, but we're here now, so I would encourage us all to put our signatures behind this.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmembers Zepone and Stratton. I read this letter, it's not a blame and shame game here. To me, it just provides clarity of what has been done and responsibilities and roles. And truly, we are all in it together, but under our charter, there is, council in many ways are limited, and it does fall on the administration. But no shame and blame, just clarity going forward, who should be doing what.
Councilmember Stratton?
I just want to quickly add that this is really about, it's not about us. I mean, we know what we've done, we know what the responsibilities are, but at some point, I think we've all felt that we've had to stop and say, we're forgetting our constituents, we're forgetting those people who are calling us, who are worried. I had somebody call me that was taking food out to the alley, to her alley, to feed people because it was cold out and they didn't have anywhere to go.
So we're looking at constituents, but they're the ones, I don't want them caught in the middle of this. We owe people an explanation of what our role is and what the administration's role is. We owe that to them. And so I just feel very, very strongly, absolutely right, there was nothing negative intended in this, but we really felt that it needed to be laid out, it needed to be signed, that we all understand it, and we can use that moving forward so that our community knows. I'm willing to do whatever I can, but this, to me, was important in that we owe it to our constituents, that they understand what our role is and they understand what the administration role is. And that really was the guiding force behind us.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, thank you. So I guess I would just say, I appreciate the information that's in here, I don't think there's anything I really disagree with generally, but although one thing that is missing, I think, is the public-facing database, which to me eliminates so much drama, that should be on here. But I guess I'm just, I'm not going to support it only because I feel like the mayor has responded to a lot of what we have asked, the things that we have said, there is an intermediate plan that's in place, is it perfect? No, but it's being put together, and I just, I don't think that there needs to be a pile on to expedite solutions. I think the solutions are being worked out, and frankly, I hope that, and I think, you know, the mayor's on, she could probably respond, but I would hope that if any council members or if we just provide some basic information pointing this stuff out, that the mayor and her team are certainly going to be responsive and read that information. And I know they've been very responsive to all the questions I've asked, and I've had an opportunity to pepper them with questions and concerns on all sides of the issue. So for that reason, I'm not, I'm not going to support it, but it's not because I necessarily disagree with what's in it, I just don't think it's necessary to get the point across. And I think we've made the point, the mayor has responded, and I expect we'll see action very quickly.
Councilmember Bingo, and then Councilmembers Zepone?
Yeah, I think I just want to echo Councilman Cathcart in a lot of that. I may have read it differently than other people, but when I, when I read the letter, it did kind of feel like a blame game. It did feel as if we were trying to say, hey, we're trying to do everything we can, they're the problem. And for me, when I have a problem with an individual, I like to just go and individually talk to that person, I think it's much more productive. And the thing that I've heard since I've come to city council is how tense every governmental organization is, you know, administration and the council, the city and the county, this and the state. And so for me, I just feel like if we're trying to build trust, if we're trying to build relationships, I see this as a step backward, and for that reason, that's, it's a big, it's a big problem for me, so I don't intend to support this letter either.
Councilmembers Zepone?
Yeah, I was gonna, I'm pretty sure the data component is in there, because I agree that was part of it too, so just wanted to make sure that was in there. And also, just say that, you know, we took efforts, Councilmember Stratton and I, to talk to all council members and get feedback on this beforehand, and wanted to be as inclusive as possible on our front, on dealing with that, and having a public response because the public's messaging all of us at the same time. And so if we could have a, this is our values and what we, you are all as a council, that was kind of the intent.
Any other commentary? Councilmember Wilkerson?
I have to echo Councilmember Stratton. There's a lot about our government, our city government, that the community does not understand, who does what, when, where, and how. And there's nothing in this letter that's not already written down somewhere else, but this just puts it out there in a concise way for the community to read it, where all the S and C codes are, what we have done. And again, it just provides clarity to the community. We know on this screen, administration and council, how things work, but truly, are we educating the community also on how it works and where we're going with it? So again, information and inclusion is the role I'm taking in this one.
Any other comments? All right, I'll just say briefly, one of the challenges on city council is, in order for us to really discuss things, we can only do it in small groups, we can't do it with four people, and we can't agree on statements except at publicly noticed meetings, and so it really, it makes it more challenging when people want a statement. So obviously, individually, I'm sure we've been responding to people, and any one of us can write a letter to the mayor, or two of us, or three of us. But there are occasions where we need to be able to make a statement, and, you know, the mayor's office can simply do one, an official mayor's office statement, they can do press conferences, and that's often what happens, and they're able to be more nimble, takes us a little bit longer to do it. On the issue of warming centers during frigid weather, I've been on the council just about six years now, and my entire time, winter continues to be a problem. We struggle and do emergency sheltering in the face of a really frigid cold snap. It costs us way more money because we're doing it at the last minute, and things are just way more expensive, it's more chaotic, and as people remind us by email, winter always seems to come in Spokane. And so we started out several, at least when I was on the council at the beginning, just statements, and then we did resolutions, and then more recently, we've done actual ordinances. And really, a lot of this letter is simply calling to the fore, hey, this is actually the law now that needs to be accomplished, and council obviously has a part in that, we have to fund it, and we've been funding what's requested, and we may need to come up with more funding for it. And there's also other ways we can be supportive. The mayor gave us one avenue that would be helpful for her, is to put our names behind recommendations for locations, which, again, I think is a fair request. But really, we're just making a statement, as many of us are willing to do, about what the law is, because city council sets the policy and the way it should be. And I'm just hopeful that we'll continue to have conversations, and I, what I would have loved to have heard over the last couple months is, yeah, we understand that the law says that we're supposed to give you a quarterly report on the homeless number from our HMIS, but here's why we haven't been able to do it. We want to do it, we intend to do it, we intend to open warming centers when it's under 32 degrees and there are no spaces for women out there, low barrier, but here's our challenge. I think that's what I'm looking more, is an acknowledgement of, that the laws are the laws, and that we should all be trying to implement them, and that if we need to make them more clear, or we need more resources, then that's something that council could do. So I think, to me, that's what this letter is, and I appreciate the work, as I've already mentioned, of Councilmember Stratton and Zepone, and the other council members, particularly Kinnear and Wilkerson, who have, you know, given lots of input, written input that made their way to Councilmembers Stratton and Zepone as well. But again, I affirm, Councilmember Wilkerson, this isn't blame or shame, it's pointing the way forward, what the laws are, what do we need to do to get where we want to go. And the best thing about today's conversation was, it seemed like we're trying to go to the same place. So I appreciate that, and I think this conversation was very helpful. And with that, let's go to a vote on the letter, and again, for anyone who's watching at home, what happens on this, it's not a resolution, it's not an ordinance, whoever votes yes, their signature will be on the letter, and whoever votes no, their signature will simply be absent. Councilmember Stratton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Yes.
Council President said yes. Councilmember Cathcart?
Nay.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bingo?
Nay.
Councilmembers Zepone?
Yes.
All right, well, we'll get that letter formatted with people's signatures on it and sent over to the mayor. Again, Mayor, thank you so much for joining us today and being part of the conversation, and all you do every day, I've heard you say it, and I believe it, is this issue of homelessness is never far from your mind as long as you're, during your waking hours. And so I appreciate, and we'll just keep working harder to get where we need to go. Thanks, everyone, and have a good weekend, take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of somebody else. We're adjourned.